All right. Good evening, everybody. The time is seven o'clock and we're ready to get this meeting going. Who's? All right, could you do a roll call, please?
Yeah, Counselor Williams is excused absent. Counselor Hansi?
Here.
Counselor Perser?
Here.
Mayor Bremen?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Parrish?
Here.
Counselor Quigley? And Counselor Miller?
Thank you.
Um, I normally don't get called on this.
I do too.
All right, I'm gonna ask everybody to stand for a moment of silence to collect their thoughts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. I believe there are some changes to the agenda.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, there are two changes to the Housing Authority Meeting agenda, so we would like to remove Resolution FHA 2025-06 and then Resolution FHA 2025-04. Oh, wait, I messed that up, actually, 2025-05 and then 2025-06, as those will be heard at our next meeting.
So we're keeping 2025-04?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other changes to the agenda?
None, Mr. Mayor.
Great, we have an agenda before us. Do I need a motion?
I move to approve the agenda with the change, with the amendments presented.
Second?
First and second. Please poll council.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Miller? Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you very much. We have, uh, one presentation tonight. Uh, members of the Parks Recreation Commission will present, uh, recent updates and projects. So, I'm not sure who is presenting. Come on up. Please introduce yourself and floor is yours. And let's make sure the microphone's working.
Okay, testing? Is it working? Yeah.
You got a thumbs up. Can everybody here in the back? Okay, great.
Oh, Shannon, I think the button may have to be, oh.
About now?
Yeah.
Now sounds good? Okay. I'll repeat myself. I'm Shannon Waddes. I'm, uh, the Chair of the Fruta Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, so thanks for allowing me to come here and present to you, um, on what we've been up to recently. So just a quick recap of the Parks and Recreation Commission. So we serve as an advisory, um, board to the Parks and Recreation Department for the City of Fruta. Um, so we advise on open space areas, recreation areas, recreational facilities, um, programs, activities, and special events. So we meet monthly and, uh, we provide Mark Van Cuso, um, suggestions and we talk through, um, current, uh, projects and things that are happening. So that's our, our role. So a few things that we've been working on, we have some bylaw updates. Um, so it was brought to our attention that the, um, city charter and our Parks and Rec, um, bylaws were not the same. So our name was actually, we were operating under the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and not the Parks and Recreation Commission, which is how the city charter is listed. So we are making those two things align. Um, so it doesn't really do anything as far as how we operate, but it is making them the same. So, uh, we're changing the name and the bylaws to Parks and Recreation Commission to match the charter. Uh, the other thing we're changing is the election of officers. So in the charter, it has, um, been elected in April and the bylaws had it in, uh, January. So we're switching that to make it also reflect the charter. And then the meeting times, the meeting time has changed since the bylaws were last approved by City Council. We wanted to make it more general. So if they do change in the future, we don't have to go back and reapprove the bylaws. So those are the three main changes, um, that we're looking to do in the bylaws. Anyone have any questions on that?
Who has to approve the changes of the bylaws? Is that internally or does council have, excuse me, does council have to approve those?
I believe City Council has to approve it.
Okay.
Which we can move forward with that. We can discuss that later too and decide if we wanna have that on the agenda later down the road.
Right.
Yeah. We've been working on this for a long time, so it'd be good to get it past the finish at some point. Um, so past projects, we had a volunteer cleanup event at Snook's Bottom in April. And so we cleaned up weeds, but we also planted, um, forty trees. So Mark was able to get a grant for $6,000 to plant these trees and it was a really big success. Uh, we started off actually with a volunteer event last fall. So that was our first one at Snook's Bottom. So this is our second one. Um, and, uh, this is our, the sticker that we came up with. So we're the Snook's Bottom Crew. We hand them out to people and the community really enjoys coming out and, and volunteering. So that was a really big success.
How many people showed up to that? We had like over?
There was a lot. Do you remember, Mark? Over fifty? There were a lot of people that showed up.
It was a great turnout.
Okay. Yeah, it was good. Uh, we also had a master gardener come out and demonstrate how to properly plant a tree, um, to make sure we set them up for success. It actually is, uh, there's a science to it and you'll just plop it in the ground. So that was, it was really nice to have her there. So these are just some pictures from that event. And we planted them all around the lake, mostly on the south side and the north side towards the parking lot. And then, uh, we did wanna give a special thanks to Keith Baldwin. He's actually in the back. He has been coming out. This is his grandson with him. He's been going out to Snook's Bottom weekly and watering these trees. So, um, they're all actually doing really well and a large part because of Keith going out there and volunteering. So we just wanted to give a special thanks to him. Um, and also to, um, there is one, uh, Parks and Rec Open Space Staff Person, Jim. So a special thanks to him as well. He's been putting a ton of effort into going out and watering these trees as well with the water truck. So between those two guys, they've been doing a great job. It's very hot out there and dry and it's not very hospitable right now for, for the trees. Um, some upcoming projects that we have, so the, um, community garden planning, uh, Mark is working on that and we're, the commission's excited to help, um, support that effort. There's gonna be some community meetings and we're, um, excited to just, uh, see that project move forward. Uh, we have decided to adopt a trail, so the Monument View Section from eighteen to seventeen road. Uh, we're gonna have our first cleanup, um, in September, actually, at our commission meeting. So we're, um, excited to do that and give back to the community. We're also gonna have a, a booth at the farmer's market on September twentieth. And then we're gonna have another volunteer event at Snook's Bottom this October, um, where we hope to do some tree wrapping on all the trees. So there's, yes.
What's tree wrapping?
Great question. So it's, uh, let me show you a picture, actually. That's tree wrapping. So it's essentially putting a fence around a tree. So, um, yes, on the left is beaver, um, destruction to the tree. There's definitely a lot of beaver activity out there. Uh, we wanna try and protect our investment that we made with planting all these trees. So, um, the commission actually went out last night and this is one of the trees that we, um, fenced in, uh, to protect it from beavers. So we also put stakes around in the ground. Beavers like to go underneath the fence. They'll climb up above the fence. Um, so we're trying to give these trees a fighting chance. And, uh, the Fruta Co-op gave us a discount on some supplies, which is really nice. Um, but it's a, it's an expensive endeavor. So we are currently fundraising. So we, it's about thirty dollars a tree to wrap them or to fence them in. And we're hoping to do all forty, um, in October when we have that event. Um, and I think that's, let me see if there's anything else that I wanted to mention to you all. Um, I think that is it. Do you have any questions for me?
What, what are you doing for fundraising for that?
Great question. Uh, I'm actually gonna go present to the Fruta Rotary in September to see if they'll give us, um, some funding for it. Uh, to do all fifty trees, it's about fifteen hundred dollars.
Any questions?
Oh, but thank you.
Yeah.
That's a good work. Great work. Yeah.
Thank you for the team that's keeping them alive.
Yes. Yes, more importantly.
It's, it's a great commission. There's, we have, um, I think there's seven or eight of us total and, uh, we're all very active and, and it's been nice to see, as I've been on the, the board the last, uh, year and a half or so, that we've really, uh, James really helped us to be engaged and, um, get a lot of these things going. Or we're definitely a very active board. So it's really nice to see that.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for being here.
Share it. All right, so that leaves us into the public participation in consent agenda. Uh, this portion of our meeting is set aside for City Council to listen to comments from the public about items not on tonight's agenda or items that appear on the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are those for which all conditions or requirements have already been met and they are typically approved with a single motion without separate discussion. We welcome and value your input to help maintain a welcoming, respectful, and productive environment. We ask that there be no clapping, cheering, booing, jeering, or sign holding. This helps ensure that everyone, regardless of their viewpoint, feels comfortable sharing their thoughts. Each speaker will have three minutes and we ask that you begin by stating your full name and address for the record. If you have any materials you'd like to share with council, please hand them over to our acting city clerk, um, so that it can be entered into the public record and distributed appropriately. Would you, uh, are you gonna keep time?
Yep.
Awesome, thank you. Um, so we'd like to open it up to public participation. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak? Please, sir, come on up, state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hello again. My name is David McKeeand, uh, two zero eight South Maple Street, Fruta. That's spelled M-C-K-E-A-N-D. I was here, uh, July first at the meeting and talked about traffic, speed, especially Maple, McKeon, Reed Park. And I'm here just to basically ask questions and find out as a resident, and I've talked to many of my neighbors and everybody has the same concern. Janine, I heard you talk in the last meeting about traffic on, uh, may, or, uh, Peach Street. So, so we all know we have a lot of concerns. My concern is where do I go as a resident and how do I voice concerns? How best to voice concerns? And I have one major concern. I've lived in Fruta since two thousand eight. And with all respects to our deple, Police Department, I think they do a great job, but I have not seen one person pulled over for speeding in, since two thousand eight, since I've lived here. And I'm not around all the time, but I'm around enough to know that it is a concern. And people drive, you know, the speed limits are posted twenty-five miles an hour all streets unless otherwise posted. Some are thirty. But I don't think it's any surprise that people drive fifty, sometimes sixty. And, and, and I don't wanna post a sign, "Come to Fruta, Colorado," where you can drive any speed you want and you will never get stopped. So my question is, is there a forum between the City Council and the Police Department? Is there communication there? Um, I don't wanna go knocking on the Police Department's door saying, "Why don't you?" You know, I wanna be respectful. I wanna encourage my neighbors to... So, so the question is, what do we do and where do we go and how do we see, uh, anything from signs to more law enforcement to our, uh, and, and where do we get the answers to that? I brought this up, uh, last month and I just want to know where does this go? What can I do as a community resident? And how am I, is that my three minutes?
Twenty seconds.
Okay. So thank you very much for listening. Uh, I know the residents, especially downtown Fruta, we, you know, we're not out in a subdivision. We are, and, and my next door neighbor just moved in or moving in with a small baby. I think you all may know him. And, uh, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Um, as a general comment, not addressing, because we don't address anything specifically, but anybody in the public with concerns can always reach out to our city manager or any of us on council at any point in time. All right, is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak? Going once, going twice? All right, with that, gonna go ahead?
Not responding directly, but may I say something?
Yes.
Okay. In general, during city council reports and actions, we tend to discuss matters that are brought to our attention.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I'm gonna close public comment. So thank you very much. Uh, with that, we have a consent agendas before us as a reminder. Uh, council can pull anything off of consent for discussion and, uh, can vote on it separately. Does anybody have anything on consent agenda that they would like to discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as before us.
Second. All right, last chance. Any questions or comments? All right, with that, would you poll council, please?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you very much. Um, we have no public hearings. Um, however, we do have some action items. The first one being Resolution 2025-28, which is a public hearing amending the 2025 budget with supplemental appropriations of funds for the launch pre-development cost, mountain water properties, and housing needs assessment. Uh, Dan Karas, our Assistant City Manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Again, uh, Dan Karas, Assistant City Manager for the record. Uh, Resolution 2025, oh, or 2025-28, um, is, uh, a resolution amending the 2025 budget. Um, I just wanted to go over a few items that are, are pertinent. I just wanna let the council know, we do have Gavin Brooke. He is online if, uh, if you have any questions specific to that portion. Um, but this is obviously not a presentation, but just in case you're curious about the fifty thousand dollars and where that goes and who pays for what. But in general, this budget is to add fifty thousand dollars, uh, uh, from the general fund balance to support the pre-development costs for the launch. And then secondarily, it's to essentially add fifty thousand dollars to an already budgeted item, uh, because of a DOL grant for our housing needs assessment. Council heard from, uh, the, uh, our planning consultant points, uh, at their last workshop. And so they're, they're working hard, so we need to move that money into that line item so we can complete that work that's a part of the 2025 strategic plan. And then lastly, uh, is an amendment that re-appropriates funds from 2024 into 2025 budget, specific to mountain water properties and the design for, um, the breach. So those are the items. I just, you know, 'cause I can't help myself, have to, um, mention that, uh, and, and a shout out to Public Works, they have actually started, um, some of the clearing and grubbing at the launch. So we are, uh, moving most of the structural material that is basically just concrete to a pile that we can then later mix with non-structural material to make, uh, road base or other structural, uh, fill and then kinda have, uh, a plan for where the organics are going. And so I just thought it would be important for the council to know that, you know, we are being supported internally. It's, uh, um, it's, it's neat because we have a lot of new faces at Public Works. And so this is, uh, a, a real awesome location to essentially practice and to train. And so we have some of our more experienced equipment operators and, and some of our maintenance worker ones out there doing the work. It's, it's kind of a fun synergistic, uh, thing that's, uh, that's, that's saving our costs, but also making, uh, the site more attractive based off of council's direction to start and try and activate that location and bring some awareness to what our, our plans are. There also is, um, uh, a couple other things that are important that are on the horizon. We're gonna start, uh, uh, the irrigation system back up and try and get, uh, either some native fescue or annual rye or something like that out there. So it's more pleasant rather than just it being, you know, kinda just a vacant piece of land. And so that, those are some exciting things that are on the horizon and hopefully we can get out there when some of the work is done and, and, uh, and tour it again, 'cause I think it's gonna be way more attractive than just trying to imagine what's gonna be out there, which has kinda been, um, how we've done it to date. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Right. And then before we bring it back to council, we'd like to open this up for public comment. Is there anybody that would like to, uh, make comment on Resolution 2025-28? All right, seeing none, gonna go ahead and close public comment, bring it back to council. Questions? Dan, for the reappropriations for the engineering of the breach of number two, there's a hundred and twenty-one. What was the original? Is that the original budget? Or we've already, like, where are we, uh, within the scope of work?
I think we had some minor changes, uh, due to, um, some wildlife that they found up there. So I can get the actual budget number. I thought it was closer between one seventy-five, two twenty-five. So a good amount of work has been done, but just due to timing, they need to be re-appropriated, uh, into, uh, this year so they can continue on that. They've already continued, but it's one of the ones that we needed to add to a prior supplemental. But I can have that very soon.
That'd be great. And I know dams take a long time. Do we think this is gonna be done in twenty-five or this is probably gonna carry over to twenty-twenty-six as well?
That's the hope, pending if weather allows, so. So you're saying if, if it was twenty-five, you're saying all of it but one twenty was last year and, and one twenty is this year. And our budget was, that full budget was in last year. We just didn't, we just started waiting till now to reappropriate it.
Correct.
I do know that it's tough that, um, you know, a lot of, a lot of survey needs to take place in order to do that. And so you kind of like immediately only have half of the year.
Right.
So I think that, you know, conceptually, like, it's gonna take a year, but.
A twelve months goes over, uh, yeah, budget periods. Okay, but we do think there's a strong likelihood it could be finished in twenty-twenty-five, depending on weather. All right, great.
I move to adopt Resolution 2025-28, amending the 2025 budget with supplemental appropriations of funds for the hu, housing needs assessment, launch, pre-development costs, and mountain water properties.
Rich, second? All right, any further discussion? All right.
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you very much. Um, I'm just a little curious about how we're gonna do the next one, um, since Mary Elizabeth?
Is, are you gonna present? Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
All right, next on the item is Resolution 2025-30, approving the subordination agreement between the City of Fruta and the Huntington National Bank in support of the eight oh five Ottley Avenue Affordable Housing Project. And our Assistant City Manager, Dan Karas, is going to present.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Dan Karas, Assistant City Manager for the record. Um, Resolution 2025-30 is a, uh, is essentially a resolution approving a subordination of a restrictive covenant. Uh, so, uh, if you recall, when, uh, the, the city started to engage with Headwaters Housing Partners to redevelop eight oh five West Ottley, the council saw, uh, the restricted covenant, restrictive covenant at that time and approved it, uh, along with a slew of other items, uh, a loan and default agreement, uh, development agreement, uh, and then a memo that essentially was the memorialized term sheet. Uh, but now, uh, what's required in order to close the construction financing is that we need to move into second position, uh, the restricted covenant, that is. Um, what's unique about this document that I think is important, and I think that Mary Elizabeth would do a much better job of explaining this than me, is that the way that this development works is that we injected four hundred thousand dollars, uh, at the outset, and then we have a distribution of funds. At the time, uh, the council gave staff the direction that they didn't want any general fund dollars to support this development. They wanted lodging tax, uh, and, uh, uh, funds out of our Economic Development Fund, which is the three and three for lodging tax. And so, uh, what's unique about this is that the covenant doesn't get recorded because all the funds need to be distributed to the partnership in order for the restriction to take place for all sixty-two units. So right now, we have four hundred thousand dollars invested, which means we get thirty-one, uh, restricted. And then, you know, as the years go on, uh, at, in twenty-twenty-eight, we will record this document and it will go into second position formally. But even though it's not being recorded, the bank still wants to protect their interest because the, as the, um, as the restrictive covenant, uh, articulates, uh, i, in the event of a foreclosure or default on the loan, it removes the restrictive covenant. But then there's a whole slew of other protections that, uh, Dalton Kelly, your special counsel, uh, went over when we, um, inked this partnership at the outset. And so that is the genesis of this, uh, essentially agreeing to what we already agreed to. Uh, but, uh, uh, if the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right, first we need to open this up to public participation. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak on Resolution 2025-30? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close public participation, bring it back to council. All right, people have questions for Dan?
Sounds just like I remember it.
So, um, Dan, because tonight's a little different, because we're gonna jump out of this meeting, going into another meeting and then coming back, can you just kinda quickly cover the relationship of why it has to go back and forth between, uh, the two, uh, bodies, City Council and the Housing, Fruta Housing Authority?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, the, the purpose for that is that the, the city and the Housing Authority are both a party to the restrictive covenant. And while we are, uh, essentially the, the cash contributors, the same relationship with the restrictive covenant happens with the FHA. However, the enforcement provisions in the municipal code, uh, would come from the city. Uh, and again, like, the city doesn't hold the loan or have any financial interests, but presently, uh, they're the ones that are contributing the funds. And so in order for this to take place, uh, kind of in the proper order of things, we move the funds from the city to the FHA and then we subordinate that loan. But we're both a party to the restrictive covenant because there are different, essentially, provisions within the development agreement where we have a first right or we, uh, have an issue with regards to compliance. Who does the enforcement of that? And so that's why both entities are, essentially, subordinating, uh, into the second position. One's a financing arm and one is the liability arm.
Great, thank you. With that, any other questions? Motion?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-30, a resolution approving the subordination agreement between the City of Fruta and the Huntington National Bank in support of the eight oh five Ottley Avenue Affordable Housing Project.
Second?
All right, great, thank you. Any other questions or discussions before we vote?
Counselor Hansi?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Counselor Miller? Motion passes five zero.
Great. So the time is now seven twenty-eight. So we are going to take a recess from the City Council meeting and open up a brand-new Fruta Housing Authority meeting. So with that, would you kindly poll, I guess, commissioners for attendance?
Right. Commissioner Hansi? Commissioner Perser?
Here.
Commissioner Parrish?
Here.
Uh, Commissioner Quigley? And Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Just so we keep it going, the Chair is also here, Matthew Bremen. So, it's only time I get to do that. All right, so with that, we're now officially in the Housing, Fruta Housing Authority meeting. So we're going to, um, Dan, you're presenting on this one as well? All right, we're gonna talk, uh, get a presentation, Resolution FHA 2025-04, a resolution approving the subordinate, subordination agreement between the Fruta Housing Authority and the Huntington National Bank in support of the eight oh five Ottley Avenue Affordable Housing Project, presented by Assistant City Manager, Dan Karas. The floor is yours.
Um, thank you, Chair and, uh, Board of Commissioners. Uh, FHA, uh, 2025-04 is essentially the exact same action, but different entity. Um, this is the Housing Authority formally, uh, uh, essentially subordinating what is a loan, uh, that they carry with the partnership, uh, since those funds come from the city and then they get distributed to the partnership. Uh, this, uh, this subordination moves us into second position with our partner. This, this subordination moves us into second position with our partner, the city, on this project with Headwaters, Headwaters Housing Partners. And it is essentially us securing the subordination for the affordability for the restrictive covenant. With that.
All right, with that, we have to open up the Fruta Housing Authority for a public comment on resolution FHA 2025 dash oh four. Is there anybody that would like to speak on this resolution? Seeing none, going to go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commissioners.
Still sounds correct.
Just to add, so this covenant that we're having is that these funds are really going to help with allowing rents to be for the, all the units to be 100% of AMI.
And below, correct, yeah, correct. And I think, you know, we, we try to take the opportunity to mention this each time we talk about this project. But the fact that it's locally funded, locally supported, we are going to have a local preference. So workers in Fruta will have sort of first crack at these units, which is part of the reason why the city and housing authority is making this investment.
Excited about it. Any other questions from the team?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution FHA 2025 dash oh four, a resolution approving the subordination agreement between the Fruta Housing Authority and Huntington National Bank in support of the 805 Ottley Avenue Affordable Housing Project.
Second? I think please, Chair, we're not, or yeah, you said mayor.
Oh, I apologize. I amend my, my recommendation to address the chair.
Thank you. Keeping it appropriate.
Thank you.
Appropriate, correct. Appropriate is always a question. And we have a first and a second. Any additional, I'm just digging a hole. Any additional questions or comments? Can you please help me out here?
Commissioner Hansi? Commissioner Perser?
Yes.
Commissioner Parrish?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigley? Commissioner Miller?
Absolutely.
Right, thank you very much. So with that, it is seven 32 and we'll officially close the adjourned the Fruta Housing Authority meeting. And we're going to come back to the city council meeting. With that, I think we're jumping into item 10, the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. A very quick city manager's report tonight, kind of the first thing to go back to the question about the reservoir tube breach. So that was actually 205,000 total. We had initially 160 budgeted for that, but then we ran into some wildlife changes, some additional work that need be done. So we got an additional 40,000 and then just reappropriating what's left to be completed this year. So 205 total and about 121 left to be spent. Two other quick items, 19 Road, so they finished up with most of the striping and also the thermoplastic work just today. They're actually onsite, you know, doing the left-hand turn lanes, all of that as well. So most of the work is pretty much done. There may still be some very minimal work on the east side. And then also there's a ramp that needs a little bit of repairs on J Road. But for the most part, that work is done and will be open for school traffic, which hard to believe begins tomorrow afternoon. So very happy to kind of see that project, at least the construction portion of it is through. And finally, happy early birthday to Mayor Pro Tem Hansi.
Happy birthday.
We don't have the same singing voice that you do. That's the last time we learned, maybe we shouldn't sing.
Nothing else on my end.
Thank you.
I have a question. What kind of wildlife stuff do we, were we encountering that?
Sage gruse or sage goose, which triggered additional kind of studies that need be done since it is on Forest Service land and some other things as well. Yeah, sage grouse.
Spend so much money on studies. That's all.
Anybody, anything else for Shannon? All right, with that, council reports and action items. And does anybody want to go first? Janine, why don't you kick it off? Normally you guys are jumping up and down.
The, I just got an invitation right before the meeting. The Arts and Culture Board will be looking at the submissions for the Heart of Fruta sculptures at our meeting next week and going through that process to choose those pieces. And the installation will be next month. So stay tuned. That's super, super exciting. And as we discussed last year, the businesses that will have a sculpture near them will get to also participate in that process.
It's perfect.
That's fantastic. And I don't actually have anything else.
Okay, we're just going to.
I, I do, I do. Because I was just wasn't ready, but I have it written right here. I do, we all have been taking these traffic concerns super, super seriously. And they've been brought to us at council meetings now for several months. And then also it even came up when we were having that chamber forum that we had with the business owners. And then just individually, we've been hearing these concerns. And we have and are continuing to take steps to address these concerns of the entire city of Fruta's population, it seems, it appears. And we can, I don't know, Shannon, if you want to chat a little bit about what those things are that we, the steps that we're taking.
And it's also will be at our next workshop, is that's one of the subjects. As a reminder, workshops are open to the public. Public does not necessarily get to participate in them, but is certainly welcome to come in and listen to kind of all the information that we're getting as well and to those discussions.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So yeah, we're kind of handling a few traffic issues right now. One that's come up a lot recently is on the south side of the interstate near Adobe Creek Golf Course. So a few things that we just, just to give that as an example, it went through our STEP program, which stands for Strategic Traffic Enforcement Program. So at first, you know, we try to, we had to get some data, you know, what is the speeds that people usually drive at? So usually start off with the police department can place a speed trailer out there. We can get some data. If more information is requested, then we also have traffic tubes that can count the speed as well and report back to that. And then after that, our traffic committee, which includes our public works director, our city engineer, our, and our chief of police usually look at that data and determine if there's something that needs to be done, whether it's an intervention or more education enforcement. So in that scenario, we did two things. We did bump up enforcement quite a bit. Usually, you know, in between calls, our police officers happen going out on that specific road. I'm just giving this one as an example to kind of discuss our STEP. There have been, yeah, yeah. I, I don't have the most recent data, but I can get it. But at first there were nine additional stops and three actual citations on there for it. So it's one of the things that we can do, but also try to focus on education as well, so our community engagement. Police Officer Ed Pacheco has actually met with Adobe Creek, the golf course, talking about just kind of reinforce some rules that we all know about, make sure that hopefully people, if they are, you know, golfing and also participating in alcohol beverages, you know, they're being served responsibly. And, you know, we're kind of doing everything that we can in our control to make sure that hopefully it doesn't contribute to some sort of accident, which it did earlier this year. And then he also met with the HOA there to kind of give some information along with some of our engineering staff. It's like, some of these seem like really easy solution, the speed bumps, you know, one that we hear about common. That's not really something that's done often anymore, just because, you know, there's variety of reasons. But we try to, you know, add in some traffic calming features if it is warranted and kind of determine what level of severity is needed for that. So Maple is a great example. We added that crosswalk on Maple and McCune, or is it, yeah, it, yeah, it is Maple and McCune right there. So I think that helps kind of bringing it in. But we can put this through the STEP process. I think we've had a few other complaints. So that kind of drives, you know, some of that as well. But yeah, as council has mentioned, our engineering staff and our public work staff will actually be kind of giving a broader overview of traffic standards at our next workshop. So we can have kind of open dialogue and kind of go from there. But really, if anyone has any traffic issues, I definitely recommend sharing with staff. We can start the process to get the data to kind of support any further decisions. I will say a lot of time the data doesn't necessarily support a reduced speed limit. Sometimes it supports an increased speed limit. So it's just kind of depending on those standards and how we want to apply certain things. But we've been doing a lot with traffic, you know, additional crosswalks. We added new signage on Aspen, on Peach and Paper. We will definitely try what we can to help out with that. And if enforcement is an issue, we can also send people out on Maple as well.
And I can attest to the fact that they have made stops in town. I was, was one of them.
I didn't even hear about that, yeah.
But yes.
Yeah.
Thirty-five into 25 is where I was at.
Did you get stopped?
No, I did not.
Yeah.
Just so you know, they have at least once.
Yeah, and. Yeah, and that's, and that's going to be kind of an area of, of focus that we probably want to discuss with council. Because in our community survey, it's actually a question of, you know, how do you feel traffic enforcement is right now? And I think 71% said it was just right. Some said too lax, some too strict. But kind of with some of these increased things we're seeing, you know, they've had discussions with me. It's like, maybe we need to prioritize more of this stuff being more visible because it is so difficult. Because, you know, if you are on, you know, in a subdivision, you know, you can miss them, you know, if they drive by, if you're not looking outside. So maybe focusing our efforts on that in between, you know, our traditional kind of calls for PD. But those conversations will be forthcoming as well.
And we are really looking forward to that workshop and hearing just exactly how these decisions, what how, what that process actually looks like, so we can be more informed when questions come to us. And, and also just in case sometimes state regulations apply and maybe Fruta, you know, maybe there are spots where Fruta is more unique than what the state regulations call for. And again, like Shannon already mentioned, but just like different signs, the one on Peach and Paper right now on both of the stop signs, this is real recent, but where it now lets people know that the other traffic is not stopping. So because so often people think that that's a four-way stop and there's a lot of issues there. So different solutions. And then there's also a staff initiative. And in this very, the factory, and Dan would be happy to chat more about all of that cool stuff. But there's some also very innovative and creative solutions coming down the Pike Tube. So just wanted to chat about, about that. So yeah, thank you so much.
Just to add to that topic, we do listen to everything that we have. We are a small enough community that we can, we can react and comment to everything brings things to us. And sometimes things take a little bit, but we want to do them right and not just quick. And so we appreciate people coming in and addressing issues and, and readdressing them if, if needs be. But thank you so much.
Okay, now I'm actually done. Thank you. Okay.
Just to have the opportunity to attend the opening of a new maintenance facility for Grand Valley Traffic Authority. Forty million dollar facility. Incredible, the, what they now have available to take care of the buses. I think add a whole lot and hopefully maybe enhance some of the routes between Grand Junction and Fruta. That's not happened yet, but they are considering new routes. So. But it was a good opening. That's all I had.
All right.
Okay. I was invited to fill in for James to go to the police commission meeting. Unfortunately, it was canceled, but I'm looking forward to maybe having another opportunity to go another time. I did want to take this opportunity to kind of plug too, that this Saturday is the Cops and Cars Car Show at the Little Salt Wash. That's going to be from eight to three. I love car shows, so I'll definitely be out there. I went to my first Museum of Western Colorado board meeting and that was really cool to see the energy that their new leadership team has and kind of some of the ideas that they refresh the local excitement for the museums. One of the big things that they're working on right now is going down to Texas to purchase some new animatronics to replace some of the ones that have maybe kind of, I mean, the animatronics that they have now have been there since I was a kid.
Yeah.
So it's exciting to see that they're getting some new stuff. They're, they're looking at one that will actually spit like the old one used to spit. So that's.
It is fun.
And just, just kind of to see the, the direction that they're going, just to try to get more locals involved in the museum again and engaged in, you know, looking at different options to maybe change things up a little bit. So excited to see where they go with that. Today I had the opportunity to go to my first Mesa County Commissioner meeting. And that was very exciting. I'm very happy to see that other local leaders are supporting their community in the best way that they know how. So you can look more into that. And then I, I did want to speak about the traffic too. I know it feels like sometimes that the police officers aren't out there, but with my background, I'm hypersensitive. I tend to pick them out and, and I know when they're running traffic, they, they really, they're out there. But they also have this responsibility of balancing being out there and being proactive, but not being intrusive, so that they don't feel like they're being oppressive. So just maybe spend a little bit more time just being aware of what they're doing. Because I, I promise they're, they're there. They're sneaky. They're watching out for people for sure.
What was the, the car show times?
Um, eight to three on Saturday.
Anything else?
I had our Historic Preservation Board meeting this week and things are shaping up really awesome for our history fair. We're really excited about kind of the reconfiguration of Fall Fest, moving the, the vendors to the center of the street to open up the traffic to keep our businesses open and accessible. And then that will also hopefully attract more traffic and attention to the history fair, which is always kind of like tucked away, you know, at the cavalcade. It's great. It's a great venue, but it like is always kind of hidden. So I think that we will probably see more traffic through there this year. They've got some pretty neat new exhibits. They have the one that I'm most excited about. They have a, an interview with one of our very longest, longtime residents. You'll recognize him, I'm sure. He, they did an interview with him that they'll be, it'll be playing kind of on a loop so that you can pop in and hear some really cool stories about basically 100 years of Fruta, which is really, really cool and really neat opportunity. And I'm really glad that's going to be available. We didn't think it was going to happen before Fall Festival. So really neat that that's coming together and going to happen. So definitely make sure that you keep that on your radar. And there will be other opportunities to see and hear that, but that's kind of going to be the, the debut. Also looking for other residents to share, you know, oral history that, to sign up for opportunities to, to participate in that same kind of setup. You know, you, you, you can be, just do oral history or be videoed or whatever. We are really trying to capture some of these, you know, some of these stories and some of this history before, you know, we lose the opportunity. So that's going to be super cool. That, oh, and we did get plaques, new plaques installed on, so on this building. You can find that on the south entrance. And so they're on all of our city-owned historic buildings. So this one, the, the, I always call it the library, the chamber building. I'm forgetting the third. Anyways, they are installed on all of our city-owned buildings. And then we are working on getting those installed on the privately owned structures that we currently have on our historic registry. So stay tuned for that too. We have a big, very, very visual, visible one coming up in the. very visual, visible one coming up in the Stephen Denise, Colin is putting the finishing touches on the Mazer House. So that one will be really fun. That'll probably be our most public, it'll be an event. So that'll be really.
Nice.
I think that's everything. Do you guys have a city manager event too?
Oh, yeah.
Forgot about, yes, we did. We had ice cream at Munchies. We had a cute little intimate group.
Yeah, I think like four or five peach shake was delicious. If you haven't had it, would recommend.
Really good. Munchies is always, you know, milkshakes and ice cream and it was, it was good. Yeah, really fun. I met two new people that I had not met before. So that was fun. And always, always a good opportunity to just have direct dialogue with, you know, our residents and really cool. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Aaron.
One second, I just thought of something. Ordinance twenty twenty-five thirteen that we went over a few weeks ago for the concealed carry. Immediately. Does that have the thirty day grace on that?
It does, yes.
That doesn't become allowed until like next week or two?
Yeah, it's thirty days from the adoption date for the ordinance.
I saw that we got lost some trees today at the Civic Center. Are there any plans to replace those there on the outside of the building?
Yeah, yeah, there were two that were taken out unfortunately due to some rotting issues that they had in there. We were told today that there could also be a third, maybe next year as well. But yeah, they will plan on planting some more in the future. We provide that same level of shade as well. Yeah.
A little too open.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That was sad to see those get taken.
Thursday night concerts will be a bit brighter.
Right, yeah.
And then the last one is just curious of why we, are we deferring FHA twenty twenty-five oh five and oh six, just not ready for tonight?
Oh, no, I, I think they're definitely ready. We're just waiting on confirmation from the state of Colorado just approving, you know, the documents so we can get it, we have the same documents that they will approve, that will be approved by council and the, or the housing authority. Yeah. So most likely at our next meeting.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yep.
All right. I've got a couple of things. Would like to ask council, Heather Rodriguez with United Way to have her come by and talk to us about Alice. I was just trying to remember what the acronym was and couldn't pull it up, but it's a statewide report they bring both, it's at the state level, county level, and then by our zip code, which kind of goes over here's average median income, here's where we sit. And then it's really also the difference between average median income and livable wage and what we're seeing in terms of trends. So if it's okay with you guys, I'd like to have her come in and do a presentation.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll reach out to her. I haven't heard back, but tonight is Community Night Out. I know there's a couple going on across the city. I know my wife is hosting one in Vista Valley and at least one or two police officers are there. So I mean, for the right reasons, not because it got out of hand. I had a meeting on Saturday with the executive director of the museum and one of the board meetings, we talked beforehand. I apologize, we haven't had a chance to talk since. And really the purpose of that meeting was I'd heard a lot of rumors and was trying to figure out what's real, what's not real. And basically what they shared is it was interesting, since Jurassic Park, the original movie was like the heyday for dinosaur museums. And then sequels apparently don't do as well, not surprising. But it challenges with attendance, both from out of the area and local. Part of what you talked about in terms of getting new exhibits was to refresh the exhibits for the locals. They are having to do some ADA work at the current facility. And may want to talk to the city about some help with the sidewalk program for, I drove past it, maybe a five foot section of sidewalk out there. But they are under pressure to kind of look at their business model and see what makes sense in terms of this, you know, this museum does better than the other ones, but doesn't make sense to do any consolidating of facilities, what are, you know, talking about fundraising, it's still very, very early stage, nothing is set. But it is something that's on the radar and that they are actively looking at. And I suspect based on our conversation in the next year, they will have some sort of plan about what they want to do with the museums. The only other thing which isn't really the city, but was just a very cool thing, I got to go to Aspen and meet with the former Prime Minister of Israel, as well as the head of the Technion, which is their kind of MIT. Nothing for Fruta. We'll see, there was some interest in talking with CMU in terms of some research collaboration specifically around water and agriculture. But who knows if anything will happen around that, but at least they're willing to have the conversation. Yeah. Yeah, Aspen's a very different community. Love Fruta, love Fruta. That's all I have, but we need to talk about, and I'm sorry, Shannon changes upcoming city council workshop meeting.
Yeah, just one quick recommendation to the city council. So we are recommending that we move our October workshop from Tuesday, October twenty-eighth to the prior Tuesday at five thirty, October twenty-first. So we always leave that five thirty to six thirty as attentive for anything that may come up to council. Right now, the only item on that workshop is to review outside agency funding requests for the twenty twenty-six budget. And Dan, Katie and I will be returning back from a conference that day and Ciara will, I think she will still be out at that point, because we'll see how good her baby is, well, how behaved he is. So there will be several staff that are unavailable to attend that meeting.
Just send, make sure the calendar updates.
Yep. Yeah, I think for the reschedule, we generally do do like a motion though for that. Yeah.
I move to reschedule the Tuesday, October twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five city council workshop meeting to Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five at five thirty PM. Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd much rather have a night off and, and go to a meeting earlier. So yes.
All right, first and second.
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish? Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
Great. So with that, we're going to, just one item, do we need to talk about the farmer's market booth? Twenty-third and whether who's going to show up there from the council, it's our city council booth, right?
Yep, yep. And we have, yeah, everyone's responses and we'll have, well, I was gonna kind of go over that at our next meeting because it was right before and we'll kind of get whatever items you're interested in. Usually we include handouts like our City Link, more information on our board and commissions. We also include swag as well. So shirts, buttons, stickers, candy, anything to kind of get people to come check out the city booth, but we'll put on our social that council will be there as well. But I believe we have coverage on almost all of them. The one question that did come up, which is a very legitimate question is what does that look like during Fall Festival? I think it will look the same, but we will double check with the chamber because I'm not sure if they'll make any changes. It'll just be the additional kind of vendors throughout that.
That I did check, sorry, one other item. I did check with the Chamber about electricity and they do have that. So that has been a subject of conversation and getting power to the middle of the road for the booths.
Great.
It has been addressed. Please don't ask me the details. Thank you.
I know you're a journeyman.
I'm no journeyman electrician.
The parade route will also be different this.
Well, yes.
Poop circles will have to be some other moved. They'll still be available.
All right. So next, that's it for the public items. We have two executive sessions tonight. And I think in terms of trying to and I think Erin, you brought this up, so thank you. Make our process consistent because it seems to be one of those, how do we want to do this? I think what we're going to want to do kind of moving forward is do a motion for each executive session. So we can do motions now to move into them. So all at once. So yeah, all at once. So the public is here to hear what each executive motion or executive session is for before we move into the session. And then once we convene into executive session, we'll still have to read all of that. But this way we make sure that that information is available to everybody. So with that, I've lost my place. I think we will need a motion for the first executive session. We'll need a first, a second and a vote, and then we'll need another motion for the second one to follow. And do we need to change the order of these based on availability?
I do not think so.
Yeah, could, can't we? So that we can, yeah, because I'd rather get, let the judge go first.
Yes. Okay. Yeah. All right. So well, except for, does Mary Elizabeth, does she have to drive back?
No.
You're spending the night?
Or are you?
Are you spending the night here in town or are you driving back tonight?
Yeah.
I want to be sensitive in terms of our schedule tonight, if you have to drive back.
No, I do not have to drive back.
Okay. So with that, we are going to switch the executive session order. If that's all right with you?
Need me for that one?
Correct. This is the informal review of our municipal judge. All right. So then we're going to go with item D.
Yep.
And then item C. So can I get a motion for D?
I move to convene into executive session for discussion of a personnel matter under CRS, section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four F for the municipal court judge's informal review.
Second.
First and second, any additional questions or comments?
Are you going to list who will be there?
So we'll, we'll vote on this.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll do the second one. So we need to vote on each one separately.
Counselor Hancy? Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
Mayor, I move to convene an executive session pursuant to CRS, section twenty-four six four oh two four B for the purpose of receiving legal advice from the city attorney regarding Mesa County District Court case for twenty-five CV three zero zero six zero.
Second, or second, any questions, comments? All right, could you kindly?
Counselor Hancy?
Yes.
Counselor Perser?
Yes.
Counselor Parrish?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley? Counselor Miller?
Yes.
Motion passes five oh.
All right. Now, as much as I was concerned about the process, just to make sure that it's on record. The first one, it will be city council plus our municipal court judge. And then for the second executive session, asked to be here will be our city attorney, assistant city manager and city manager. Shannon, is there anybody else that's going to be in that? So, okay. All right, with that, we're going to adjourn out of the public and move into executive session and we'll wait until the recordings start to do the next.